You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. We will first start with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The board member can provide our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear God, as we gather together as a school board, please bring your divine wisdom to each of us and guide us as we make the important decisions that affect our children, our educators, and our community. Please help us to be respectful and kind to one another as we work together toward our common goals and help us to remember that gender, race, or socioeconomic position should never be a barrier to an excellent and equal education. God, please bless our superintendent as she embarks on her new career in Raleigh and help guide her as she makes important decisions that affect all of our children in North Carolina. God, we ask that you watch over the Braemer family as they mourn the death of their loved one and give them peace. And Lord, please watch over board member Burke as she battles the flu. And we humbly ask that you bless all of our board members and their families. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next, we will have our agenda review and we will need to amend our agenda tonight. We will need to add an action item labeled H, approval of the interim superintendent contract and an amendment to the superintendent's contract. Of course, each of the board members have a copy in front, so when we get to that point, we will deal with that. So next, we have the... Oh, I'm sorry. I was moving ahead without, of course, getting a motion to approve it. Sorry. So is there a motion?
Chairwoman Woodbury, we're at the gender review, correct?
Yes.
I think that there may be an idea to remove the Wiley-Gem action
Okay.
for tonight. I think we just as a board need more clarification on exactly what we're voting on and maybe we can revisit that at Building and Grounds. Ms. Carly?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to amend the agenda as it relates to the adding of the interim information and also to remove the Wiley item, which is F? I make a motion? All in favor? All right. Oh, I'm... All opposed? All right. So next, we're going to have special recognition of the Carolina Thunderbirds Marley Drug Floor Hockey Program donation. And we have Mr. Dave Marley and Scott Brand.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Harmon. I'm the program manager for Health and Physical Education. And tonight, it is my pleasure to stand here with Dave Marley and Scott Brand. In partnership with the Carolina Thunderbirds, Marley Drug recently announced a new in-school sports program that adds another fun activity to our K-8PE curriculum and will help grow the sport of hockey in our area. The Thunderbirds and Marley Drug Floor Hockey Program was announced January 25th and provides sets of floor hockey sticks, nets, balls, and program curriculum manuals to all of the elementary and middle schools in our district. This donation is estimated to be worth about $54,000 in equipment and resources. Dave Marley said youth hockey has been an important part of his family for almost 10 years. And with this donation, he hopes to introduce the great sport of hockey to hundreds of students who might not otherwise be exposed to the thrill of having a hockey stick in their hand. The Carolina Thunderbirds president and general manager, Scott Brand, said, "The overall goal is simple. Grow our great game by putting a hockey stick in every kid's hand. The other goal is to encourage kids to be active and fit, playing a sport that is rewarding on all kinds of levels." North Carolina is currently seeing a renaissance of sorts in ice hockey at the professional level with the Carolina Thunderbirds first in their league by 40 points, as well as the Carolina Checkers leading their league so far this season. In addition, the Fayetteville Marksmen and the Carolina Hurricanes are in playoff position. This program will launch next school year at all of the elementary and middle schools in our district. Please join me in thanking Mr. Marley and Mr. Brand for making this opportunity available to our schools and our students.
On behalf of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board and Dr. Emery, our superintendent, I would like to provide a certificate of recognition first to Mr. Marley Drug. And I would also like to present a certificate of recognition to Mr. Carolina Thunderbirds. Would you gentlemen like to say anything? I mean, you've given $50,000. You have to say something.
My name is Dave Marley. And we've been fortunate to have Marley Drug here in Winston-Salem for coming up on 16 years this year. And I've been very fortunate to have a lot of support from the community. And so we felt... I've always felt important to give back and be a part of the community. And this just happened to land in our lap at a time when hockey was growing. We knew... You know, my kid's been playing hockey for nine years now. He's 14 years old, started playing when he was five. And it's just been a wonderful experience, you know, for our family, for the kids, for the kids that were involved with, the families we're involved in. And having this opportunity to give back and then realizing we have a wonderful resource here with the Carolina Thunderbirds. I've joked and said, "I just wrote the check. That was the easy part. This guy's doing all the hard work," you know? I approached him in November and said, "Look, I have a..." Trying to knock down a significant tax bill and I have a figure I'd like to give away. If you can find a way to get the city to let you... That we can do this before the end of November, then we can make this happen. And I don't know how he did it, but this guy is a workhorse. And he's why hockey is growing at the professional level in Winston-Salem now. And so he did all the hard work. So I'm going to let him talk for a second.
Well, I'll be brief. As you can tell by my accent, I'm a Yankee from way up north where it's cold all the time. And... But what I have to tell you is what Dave has done and the way that the community has accepted the Thunderbirds is beyond a miracle and a blessing. And we are so privileged and honored to be part of this community. And I can't say thank you enough to everybody, not only for the way that they've... This program's been accepted and what this will do for our great game, as well as health and wellness of our youth, but how they've accepted hockey and the Thunderbirds and ourselves. And I don't want to tell you, I love you all because that might sound a little corny, but thank you all very much and we love you all. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next, we have our public comments on the agenda. And first, we have Paul Wiles. I would just say, as Mr. Wiles come up, that you will have three minutes to address the board and just please be mindful of the three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Woodbury and members of the board. I'm Paul Wiles. I'm here tonight as a member of the Project Impact Board, the advisory board. We have been at it now for three years. And earlier... Let me first... I should stop. I apologize for showing up this way after having a battle with a dermatologist today. So please excuse the deformities. We've been working with your leadership, with Dr. Emery and Kelly, now for three years. Project Impact has invested some $10 million in strategies to help improve the reading outcomes of our young children from across this county. Earlier this month, Dr. Emery and Kelly and others presented to the Project Impact Board. It was an energizing meeting. It created optimism amongst the advisory board. And we stand tonight committed to continue to be your partner and work with you in seeing that our third graders, our fourth graders are reading at grade level just as soon and as fast as we can possibly get to that point. So you'll hear from Kelly and I presume Dr. Emery here shortly, an abbreviated version of what the Project Impact Board heard. But we want you to know the advisory board of Project Impact fully supports the directions they're going. Not everything has worked as well as we'd want it to, but that's okay. You can't fix things until you try things. And so that was my message. I think I've taken less than three minutes. I'll sit down and best wishes and good luck with helping all of our children reach that third grade reading level that we all want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. PJ Loughlin, but the topic as it relates to West Forsyth Park is not on our agenda tonight. So if we could move you to the general public comments, that would be the ideal time. Oh, Buildings and Grounds Committee report? Okay. 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 Thank you for that clarity.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members. Greetings from the Town Council of Clemmons. We need your help and a request that you please approve Action Item C because that would help us. I'm here tonight to speak to you regarding a serious issue involving West Forsyth High School. While I understand that there are parking issues at a number of our schools, the situation at West Forsyth is a tragedy in the making. Parking for West Forsyth is insufficient for the students that are currently driving themselves to school. So the church across the street has provided their lot for extra parking. This has created an extremely dangerous problem. The kids are crossing four lanes of a very busy road at least twice a day. Anyone that drives down Louisville Clemmons Road on a regular basis has had to dodge the kids that are constantly running across the street the entire length of the school grounds instead of where the crossing guard is located. To make matters worse, some parents that want to avoid the unbelievably long line of cars waiting to drop off in the morning and pick up in the afternoon or letting their kids off and picking up on the southbound side of the road, which of course is an addition to the kids already coming across from the church and those walking to and from home. The situation cannot be allowed to continue as it is now. Whether the answer is more land to build another parking lot, more resource officers, penalties for crossing without a crossing guard, a combination of answers, or something completely different, we need to get our heads together and get something done before something terrible happens that we will all regret. The safety of the children is the most important thing. Please help us come up with a solution that will work for everyone and provide the safe environment our citizens expect and deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Taisha Burrow.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
It's Taisha Burrow. And I'm here to address our restart program, which is on the table at Petrie Elementary. As the parents got an opportunity to listen to it, we felt like it was a great opportunity. However, in our current state of an emergency, the parents don't feel like we are ready. We don't have the right foundation. We first need to deal with some of the problems that are stopping our children from learning. I'm in the building about four hours every single day. We have teachers that are abusing our children mentally, verbally, and emotionally. And we are asking for tapes to be pulled and staff to be held accountable. We are having a bullying problem on our buses, which filter over into the schools. We need monitors on those buses. The bullying continues throughout the day. We have no guidance counselor in our building. The parents do not mind working with Dr. Horton. However, we want a leadership team that looks like our children in the school, that includes the parents and the community. And then our parents want to be involved. We have parents here tonight that were... We had a sit-me in last week. And after that sit-me, and Dr. Rosenberg... Burrow? I may say it wrong. She came and readdressed the parents. And last night, we had maybe eight or nine Hispanic families there. And they didn't have proper translation for them. So they said, "Hey, we're going to show up tonight." So the parents are here tonight. This board doesn't even have translation for them. They're here? No, they don't know what we're saying. We need help. So if it's help here, if the help isn't even here, you know we need the help in our school as well.
Thank you, Ms. Burrow. I will say that make sure that when... You're fine, Ms. Burrow. Just make sure that when you're coming up to speak on the agenda item, when we see curriculum committee... There is a curriculum committee report. So then I'm thinking that it maybe has something to do with what the curriculum committee report is going to deal with. So just sort of be specific so that we can help to make sure that you're in line with our agenda. Because if you're not, what I'll do is just tell you to speak at the end towards public comments, which is a more broad environment. You could, you know, talk about pretty much anything that's appropriate. Right? So just be mindful that right now we're speaking specifically to the agenda items according to our school board.
The restart program? I thought the restart program was on the...
For Cook, but not Petrie. Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Mr. Al Jabbar.
Good evening, Chairman Woodbury, Dr. Emery, and the remaining board members that are here tonight. I'm not sure, based on what chairperson Woodbury said, if I'm going to be in order. But I do want to talk about curriculum. And there was something that was rolled out to the parents' community yesterday, I think, concerning a restart. So I don't know, restart is specifically Cook?
Yeah, so that's going... So the Cook is for the agenda tonight. Could you do the... Your piece at the end with the public comments? I appreciate it, Mr. Jabbar. Thank you so much. Next, we have Jessica, I think it's Centron?
She took her son to the bathroom.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Alan Daniel.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, members of the board, and Dr. Emery. I wanted to address Building and Grounds. First of all, I would like to thank those of you who were at Brunson last night for the reassurance that we're on track. But a lot of discussion was last night involved what's going to happen to Brunson between now and 2022. So I just wanted to read a couple of things that folks sent me about the school. And I know Mr. Fallon does a great job of taking care of things. But when I was a teacher, I made the mistake of turning in a work order because my room was 80 degrees and the humidity was 84%. And every teacher in the school got a big, "Don't do that." You know, it's... There are policies and procedures, and I'm the one that turns in maintenance requests. So that's maybe why some teachers don't say anything. She sends me a picture of the thermometer in her room at 5:37. It's 78 degrees. This is three weeks after the maintenance was in to fix my thermostat. The worst was watching my students suffer through the end-of-the-quarter tests for 90 minutes in 85-degree heat. And then there was a request by one teacher to another to please share your story of being so sick at Brunson and mold in your bloodstream story. And then another... "I worked at Brunson for four years as an HAG teacher and an AIG teacher. I lived with chronic sinus infections. It was terrible. My room was upstairs, right across from the bathrooms. Since leaving in 2017, I haven't had one single sinus infection." So my point of all this is Brunson has been ignored for over a decade. Mr. Fallon's been there for 12 or 13 years. I've been there three years. And every time I've... You know, there's people that walk across that campus every day. There was a lockdown not too long ago because three kids were breaking in cars at the hospital and the police came to chase them. And what did they do? They ran across the parking lot at the VP station, threw the gate onto Brunson's campus. Great. My son's in there somewhere. I didn't find out about the lockdown until I read it in the paper the next day. I said, "Just put a fence up. Oh, we don't want to spend that kind of money. We're going to give them a new school." Well, I'm here to tell you tonight, my son will be graduating from Brunson in June. If anything happens to him... Because there are... Every time I've gone on that campus, there are people walking across that campus that have absolutely no business being on that campus. If anything happens to my son between now and June, it would have been a whole lot cheaper to build a fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rhonda Mays. Ms. Mays, you... Okay. So she was going to talk about the modification to Wiley. And since we've deleted that from our agenda, then we'll move forward. I think it's Charlisse Roper. I think Ms. Roper is going to talk about the Cook upgrade proposal.
Greeting board and guests. My name is Charlisse Roper, and I serve as the dean of culture at Cook Literacy Model School. Though I don't even receive the 8%, we are to discuss this evening, and our teachers deserve it, and more. We at CLMS work in a concentrated pressure cooker of need, working to support families on the foundation of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. The basics of Maslow's hierarchy must be fulfilled before one can move on to more abstract needs. Many needs we encounter on a daily basis are those of basic security, social and emotional needs, physical and mental needs, all needs of fulfillment valuable for academic success. Now, no one was forced to work at Cook. No one's arms were tied, nor bamboo shoots placed under 80 nails. But the contrary. We dawn the doors of the unknown, committing to what we believe was the right place to be and the right thing to do, despite many accusing us of professional suicide. Because we believed in the power of one in conjunction with the power of a few, all need to know the power of many. We don't just survive, we thrive. We thrive right beside our students. Each day, we enter the threshold of CLMS in spite of, not because of. I lost my spot. It's about the magnitude of the work we do every day. 8% doesn't compensate us for the extra time we spend preparing, planning, and organizing on every level of our building, nor for the extra trainings we participate in to ensure we are preparing ourselves to meet the needs of our students every day. It doesn't give us back from lost soccer games with our little ones, date nights with our significant others, nor just miss time to make oneself whole to give to others. It doesn't mean that there are other hardworking teachers in the district, nor does it ease our minds as we try to figure out difficult situations for our families on a daily basis. But it's nice to know our leaders, our administrators, our colleagues, our system, and the community appreciate our efforts as we continue to thrive, as we continue to develop students who thrive in a condensed pressure cooker of need. Thank you in advance for your support.
Thank you. I just received some information and clarity, and I need to apologize to, I think, Ms. Burrow that you are correct in coming up talking about the restart for, I think it was Petrie because Ms. Roseburg gave a report in curriculum committee about restart that would affect Ashley, Forest Park, Hall, Woodward, Kimberly Park, and Petrie. And so therefore, you're right, Mr. Jabbar. I'm getting ready to call you up so that you can have your say. So before I call Morgan Carp, if Mr. Jabbar will come up so that we can honor your time, thank you, and I apologize again. Yes, and I'm going to... Thank you so much.
Chairman Woodbury, if it's permissible, I'd like to get an extension on my time based on the fact that I had to go back and revamp what I was going to say when I was initiating. But nonetheless, restart, reimagining has been a buzzword in the community as it relates to five schools. I looked at the program, analyzed it. It's not... It's a good program. The question is, are the schools prepared? And you say a one-year kind of a getting-ready thing was supposed to take place. Let me tell you, some of our schools need more than one year to get ready for this process. Now, it's up to the board determining what's going to happen with these restarts. But I think in defense of the principal at Petrie, I think that she should be given adequate support in terms of what's going to be decided at Petrie. Our kids, number one, are the most important reason why I volunteer. If we're not serving our kids and the fact that we need to make sure she's surrounded with good support staff that can carry out this mission. Our kids come with a lot of different concerns. That's another extension. Our kids come with a lot of different things that... You know, it takes... It takes special people who love children to really understand what it means to impact their lives. And we need to not throw everything away that is in place. I just think that we need to get some support in the area of how can we be successful with what we have at Petrie Elementary. So I'm asking this board, we don't have a social worker. We have Spanish-speaking people at our school, but we got $20,000 worth of headphones in a closet. What does that say to our Hispanic families that don't speak English? So there's some things that we need to sort through and work through so that we can get the achievement that we're looking for. We got to have high expectations for our kids. And in that, we must put things in place to meet that expectation. So I say to you as a board... So I say to you as a board, as we look at this restart, a re-imaging program, just make sure it's a good fit for the schools. Because some schools might be prepared for this, some schools may not, but I ask you that you will give that much thought. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Ms. Jessica Sintran. Is she in the room? Good evening.
First, I want to say that love is the greatest subject that could be taught. The emotional state of our children is on the line. Before we even begin to have the conversation about a restart, as far as curriculum goes, we need to address the epidemic of bullying within our students, the students, and also teachers, the student. We need a lot in Petrie emotionally for our kids. They're not going to learn if they're coming in unhappy, and if the teachers are not accepting them and welcoming them first thing in the morning. I want to say we need Spanish translators. I think that's been a big topic. It's a big thing. I feel that our demographic, it, it calls for accommodations for everybody. The people in our school, there's so much culture and diversity. There has to be something for everyone to explain what is going on. A lot of our Hispanic parents are not coming out to meetings because as, even the agendas aren't in English, you know, so they don't really know what's going on. Lastly, I just want to say, based on our school's demographic, I feel that Black history and Hispanic history needs to be taught to our children. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Morgan Karp. Morgan is also speaking about the Cook Upgrade.
Good evening, Board. My name is Morgan Karp, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Cook Literacy Model School. This is my first full year of teaching. I began my teaching career last January at Cook in a third- and fourth-grade combination class. After the first half-year, the thought of leaving and taking other opportunities had crossed my mind, for it was a tough six months with getting to know many students, learning curriculum, tending to many schedules, and building relationships. But then I remembered why I needed to stay, and more importantly, why I wanted to stay. Did I stay for the money? Well, that may have been a factor, but all I could think about in the end was my principal, our fearless leader, my fellow teachers, and most importantly, the students that we serve every single day. The range of a typical day at Cook can vary greatly. Some days, we are solely focused on problem-solving strategies in math and decoding strategies in reading. Other days, it's having to wash a student's clothes or buy them new shoes because the sneakers they've worn every day since August are now ripped and too small for their feet. No matter the task, it gets done and is always done with a smile and an open heart. The love, support, and commitment to the school is shown to all those who enter its doors, and in the end, is why I chose to begin my teaching career at CLMS. Our commitment to each other and to the students truly sets us apart. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Alicia Taylor. She's going to also talk about Cook.
I am Alicia Taylor, an Expanded Impact first-grade teacher at Cook Literacy Model School. So you ask, what does an Expanded Impact teacher do? I, of course, teach my first graders with the support of my reach associate. I model for other teachers. I co-teach, support, and lead planning, implement school-wide initiatives such as Great Habits, Great Readers, Teach Like a Champion, and CT3. I came to Cook as a teacher, but my experience at Cook has helped me to become a teacher leader. I would like to thank all involved with the restart of Cook, especially Dr. Wilkins, for the opportunity to be a part of something so special. She's brought fresh ideas to lead Cook through its changes for the better, and collectively, we have changed for the better. Dr. Wilkins brought opportunity culture to Cook to build capacity in our staff and creatively meet the needs of our students and staff. We are moving in the right direction, but there is more work to do. With your continued support, we can further use opportunity culture with Expanded Impact positions and set a trend for other Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools that are interested in seeking new ways to meet the needs of their students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alice Day Clark. She's also going to speak about Cook. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alice Day Clark, and I'm a third-grade teacher at Cook Literacy Model School. First, I want to thank you all for your time this evening. I want to share with you the need for consistency and continuity among our teachers at CLMS. This is the first year since the restart that we have not had a single staff member resign. This is the first year in a very long time where every single one of our students who started the year with us still has the same teacher with whom they began the year. Our students often experience so much inconsistency outside of school. This in-school consistency is crucial to their emotional well-being and their academic success. As a staff, we have worked tirelessly to improve our school culture, decrease behavior problems, and increase academic success and rigor. In response to this need, we have taken on initiatives to build our capacity and serve our students, such as No-Nonsense Nurturing, Orton-Gillingham, and American Reading Company. Each of these efforts has made an enormous impact on our school culture and the power of our instruction. Unfortunately, the reality is the impact of these initiatives is forwarded year after year if we have large staff turnover. With each new cohort of staff members, we have to restart these efforts. While it gives me great joy to stand here and speak about the truly remarkable work and growth happening at CLMS, there will always be those lingering questions in the back of my mind as a teacher. What about next year? Who will be left? Who can do this work another year? And most importantly, how can we keep my phenomenal colleagues at CLMS? While the eight percent pay bump certainly isn't the only reason why we choose to stay at Cook, it helps. It's a sign of respect that you understand the magnitude of the work here is especially challenging and sometimes heartbreaking. It's an incentive for other colleagues to consider filling the open positions we always seem to have. My request to you this evening is that you consider the ways in which you support us in these efforts. We need your help in order to retain and recruit the best staff for CLMS, which is absolutely what our children deserve.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Alfred Harvey. He's going to speak in regards to, I think, Policy Committee.
Chairwoman Woodbury, distinguished board, Dr. Emery. Let me take one second to congratulate the members of Cook Literacy School for their hard work and efforts to upgrade Cook. I had two daughters that attended Cook during the time when I served as the PTA co-Vice President, so I know Cook's a great school, with great potential, and I appreciate you all for the hard work that you do. But I would like to say to this board, when it comes to policy, it seems as though previous boards did not adhere to the policies that were in the handbooks. Because I sat in a meeting today and looked at the policies, strolled on the chalkboard or whatever you want to call it, and I happened to think about, hmm, that policy wasn't followed. So I say to you, if you're going to work on a policy or do anything with policy, that you follow the policy. Don't just make up the rules as you go along. This reminded me of a Sandlot basketball game. The guy that was the biggest and the baddest and could talk the loudest, he made up all the rules. And so it seems as though you all are not willing, willing to follow your own rules. Put up something that said ninety days. You forget all about ninety days. You go beyond ninety days. You do whatever you want to do with a policy. I say to you, when you make a policy, stand by the policy. If it's a state statute, because I looked at the sheet today, it says State Statute 115-C, but when you read 115-C, there's a lot of things that go along with it. That we're not doing. Or that we do, and we close our eyes. We don't do, follow the policy the way it should be followed. And so we put the board in a precarious situation. I ask you to be good stewards for the citizens of Winston-Salem Forsyth County, and do all that you can to raise the achievement levels of all our kids, because they all deserve the best, and I hope that you work and do your level best to follow the rules that are established for the cohesion of an excellent school and school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, we have Ms. Kelly Easton. She's going to talk regarding buildings and ground.
So I'm here today to speak on, to speak on behalf of Action for Equity. Action for Equity seeks to advocate for equity for students in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools and academic achievement, access to high-quality instruction, and safe and healthy school environments. We believe that the goals that we have provided in the past will help build a more effective and stronger community here in Forsyth County. And on December thirteenth of last year, the coordinator for Action for Equity came to provide a following, to provide a list of recommendations. And so I'm here this evening in order to follow up with two line items under our healthy and safe school infrastructure. So then we asked, and I'm asking again tonight, for a measurable resolution of the complaint file with the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights regarding Ashley Academy that includes a plan to build a new school. So we know that last week, Mr. Dale Walker indicated that he will be looking into options in order to move forward with building a new Ashley. And so the community would like to know, when will these options be available? That's the first item. Excuse me. The second is, we are asking to, for the development of a matrix and infrastructure plan that focuses on equity. This matrix should identify the resources and infrastructure needs of each school, and we are asking that a draft be publicly available no later than May 2019. So we know that in twenty, beginning in 2014, the community had been fighting for a new Ashley Academy. We know that in 2016, Ashley Academy was listed as one of the top priority, as a top priority of schools in need to be rebuilt. It was dropped off the bond, which we understand, but that does not, that doesn't, the fact that the school still needs to be, that we need a new school, that right there is still an issue. So we know, again, that it dropped off the bond. However, that does not mean that it was no longer a priority. So again, we would like to have answers in regards to when those options will be available, and then we are also requesting for a matrix be created so we can really look at the needs across the entire district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our discussion items. First, we have Project Impact Update.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chairwoman Woodbury, board members, and Dr. Emery. I just wanted to begin, before I start this Project Impact Update, by first thanking Chairwoman Woodbury for sitting through quite a long Project Impact Advisory Board meeting where she was able to kind of hear the full picture of all the data that we shared and offered some really valuable feedback to that. So for that, we are thankful, and hopefully you'll see that in some of the things we do moving forward with your feedback. I want to begin by sharing that this time last year, exactly almost one year to the date, I stood up here newly hired as of three months and shared a vision and plan for an Office of Early Learning. So we are really grateful to the Project Impact Advisory Board for being a board that allowed that vision to come to fruition and see and realize that third-grade reading begins before children even come to school. And that's where the magic happens. And so I'm excited to share some of the things that have happened since I was here last year and give a little glimpse into what we hope to look at moving forward. In thinking about that, I just want to do a brief reminder of Project Impact. These are their key focus areas and some of their key strategies. Mr. Wiles talked about that this has been going on for three years so far. It's actually a six-year initiative total running through 2022 with the funding that they've given. It's a public-private partnership that they developed in order to accelerate outcomes for children. And we're going to talk about some of those key three strategies tonight. We're going to look at the pre-kindergarten expansion. We'll have Dr. Paula Grubbs here, who works in our pre-K programming, to speak about that. Extended and summer learning options with our Pathways programs, I'll share about that. And then staff development and instructional support, which has been a really big piece of the Office of Early Learning work this year. Those are a few of the pieces that we'll share as we talk through a little bit of the Project Impact work. And as stated, this really is truly a beginning, and to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Wiles said, we are trying new things, and we hope to try some even more different things with more feedback as we go forward to seeing how can we truly accelerate outcomes. And so we look at the data in a really true and meaningful way to let it guide what we do continue to do and what we do maybe need to change. So I'm going to pass it over to Paula Grubbs.
Good evening. So I'd first like to tell you about who our pre-K students are. As you may know, every pre-K student in our district is at risk. They are at risk due to educational need, due to family economics, or due to known risk if they have an identified disability. So what we see, though, is these are the, the first touch that we have with our pre-K students. This is their first screening. We are the red. The national average is black. So as you can see, all of our students are actually at risk in more than one way. So as we think about publicly funded programs for four-year-olds, again, we're talking about our at-risk students. So the blue is all the district-provided classrooms. The red are our community partners. So we serve about nine-hundred-and-ninety-two students in the district in preschool classrooms, and then our partners serve the remaining. So as a result of Project Impact funding this year, we were able to address social-emotional needs in preschoolers. As you may know, it's a national conversation about persistent, challenging behaviors, suspensions, and expulsions of very young students. We chose to address it by offering professional development to all of our teachers in the district on crisis de-escalation training that is aligned with our preschool standards. And so what we found after a five-hour session was that our social-emotional referrals dropped in our classrooms. So to us, this is significant because the less time that teachers are spending addressing persistent, challenging, sometimes violent behaviors, the more time that they're spending teaching, providing interventions, and interacting with their students. So then we tried to think about, what did we know about our students as a result of our program that kind of impacted them going forward? So we looked at one important factor of reading, phonemic awareness, and we tried to figure out what our students knew as a result. So the red circles are where they all started. They were all at risk. So the top row is last year's data, so the blue circles are students who are no longer at risk. So the blue circles are students who are no longer at risk. So on phonemic awareness, at the end of their pre-K year, they were meeting or exceeding their age-expected standards. The bottom, however, is our beginning-of-year-to-middle-of-year-this-year information. And as you can see, we're making good gains. So we thought, this was important, too, because it would help our Office of Early Learning think about different kinds of interventions as they go into big school. And now I'll share this.
I love it when she says "big school." I'm going to share a little bit with you about our summer pathway programs. So we have two pathways programs, Pathway to K and Pathway to One. I'm excited that this year, we have never had transportation for Pathway to K before. And our transportation folks have worked extremely hard to make that dream a reality. And so this year, we're going to be able to have transportation for Pathway to K, which is really exciting because I think it's going to open up doors to serve a lot more students when they can have transportation to actually get to the sites. Here is some demographic information that tells about the students we served last year in our Pathway to K and Pathway to One sites. Our sites are Bolton, Easton, Gibson, Kimberly Park, Petrie, Smith Farm, and Spees for Pathway to K. And then Pathway to One was Bolton, Kemble Farm, Mineral Springs, Petrie, Smith Farm, and Spees. So those were our sites for last year. This is some of the initial data that we used to take a look at students in Pathway to K. So you'll see three bars for every single category. And those show the three weeks that the students participated in the program. Then one of the major pieces we're looking at for Pathway to K is the social-emotional aspect. And this data that you're seeing comes from the Kindergarten Entry Assessment, which is our state assessment that we use for students going into kindergarten. So it's a normed assessment, letter naming, book orientation, object counting. Those pieces kind of speak for themselves. One of the pieces that was really important, I felt like we should kind of stick out, is the emotional literacy piece. If you take a look at that, we have students at eighty-seven percent who were kind of coming in before what we established as a goal with emotional literacy. So you think about emotional literacy, it's how you respond to situations that are occurring. When you look at the very early end of that stage, you see children who respond with outbursts, screaming, yelling. They just don't know how to articulate their emotions. When you look at the area that we are hoping for, which is our set goal, which would be the green area, that's when students are able to actually label their emotions. So I am mad, I am happy, I am sad. And that progresses all the way up to where they can do that with complex emotions. I'm confused, things like that, worried. So it's pretty exciting to see the difference in the emotional literacy of students as they go through the program before they get ready to go to kindergarten the next year. We have the same type of data for Pathway to One. Again, emotional literacy is a big piece for those students that are in Pathway to One. And another piece of data that you are not able to see here that we used was also text reading and comprehension, which is reading skills. But when you look at text reading and comprehension, you are looking at students and looking for those students who are proficient readers. I use the analogy in the board meeting that those are folks who are able to swim across and back the pool. They don't have to think about it, they can just swim. And so what we've come to realize, though, is we noticed a dip in scores between the end of the programming and back to school for first grade. And we took a look at some data to help us kind of dig in a little bit deeper. And what we realized is that there were some early skills that were missing that had holes that we needed to make sure that we're filling. So that's one of those ways that we're trying to look at our programming and making sure programming is consistent. So as pre-K talks about phonemic awareness work, which is one of the greatest early indicators of reading proficiency later on, phonemic awareness, letter name, relationship with sound. As we looked at that, how do we tie that into the programming that we're doing for Pathway to K? And how do we use that for Pathway to One? So the next slide kind of shows some data that we dug into to help look at that. When you look at the kindergarten at the beginning of this year for first sound fluency, again, that's a precursor skill. So that's like, can they kick their feet? Can they move their arms? Do they know when to take a breath? That's what first sound fluency is. So when you look at that data, you can see that that is a huge discrepancy for us because we have fifty-two percent, over half of our children, who are coming in below benchmark levels in that skill set. Another piece I wanted to look at was kindergarten at the end of the year last year and then first grade at the beginning of the year this year. And this was the data that really helped us change the programming for this summer specifically in looking at what curriculum we choose and how we address literacy in the summer programming. And if you look at the middle bar to the bottom bar, when you look at those students, when they left kindergarten, they were at seventy-nine percent proficient, which would be your blue and the green bars. And when they began first grade, they were at fifty-six, those same students. So this is same cohort data. So they decreased by twenty-three percent over the summer. So we're trying to change our target for how we choose students who participate in the summer program to hone in on these early skills. Because if you don't catch these skills early on, they're really difficult to intervene in, especially when you get to middle and end of second and end of third grade. Makes it a lot more difficult. I want to share with you now, a little bit moving on into the Office of Early Learning work, which all of this is, but kind of think about expanded staff development and instructional support. So we were able, through the funding provided, to create two cohorts with our schools. So we had twenty-three schools in Cohort One that we served this year. They were Ashley, Bolton, Caleb's, Cash, Cook, Diggs, Downtown, Easton, Forest Park, Gibson, Abraham, Jefferson, Kemble, Con Oak, Lewisville, Metallark, Moore, Morgan, Petrie, Rule Hall, Sedge Garden, Smith Farm, and Vienna. And we, those schools were in our first cohort. So they had the support of what's called an early learning partner. So you might think typically of having coaches that go out into schools and offer support. Early learning partners work a little bit different. I have them kind of keep numerical but also qualitative data that shows how they support teachers and the range varies. So they're covering classrooms for teachers. They are helping run small groups. They're helping do interventions. They're helping with teacher training. They're helping support in professional learning team meetings. They're meeting with some schools' principals, actually, when requested. So there's a lot of work that they do that goes on in there. There was some work, though, that we did that was for everyone. So part of the work that we did that encompassed everyone are two half-day PDs for all of our kindergarten teachers, where substitutes were provided, as well as two half-day PDs for all of our kindergarten teaching assistants. An interesting piece of data, as we look at that, is that ninety, close to ninety-five percent of our kindergarten assistants had never had a district-wide-led training, which is really important because they're the next step in the classroom that can offer support for teachers and working with small groups. So it's really important that we continue to focus on training those folks who can work the most closely with our students day to day. The other things that we did is we partnered with our content leads to get materials needed for classrooms. So the one you've probably heard the most about is our partnership with the Social Studies. Rebecca McKnight in Social Studies, we worked with them. And she created a great list of texts that every single school got for their classrooms. We have kindergarten teachers that are working now that are writing plans to go along with those texts. Rebecca's helping us with that team because she was intentional in the books that she chose to kind of correlate with her infusion project. So we've been doing that work. We did the same thing with mathematics. Ms. Simonton has ordered materials for every single school. She was able to get materials for every single teacher in the district for kindergarten. And we did the same for science, the most famous of which were the ants and the ant farms that they got in their classrooms. So that was a popular one. That's just a little bit of the work. I also want to share that we were able to hire a research and evaluation person who's really helped us that lives in Dr. Ward's department. And he helps us with kind of looking at longitudinally, how do we look at our data that we're collecting and really disaggregate it and get more meaningful data than just generic big-picture pieces. We also, like I said, have a transitions coordinator that I'll talk with about in just a little bit. Really quickly, one of the pieces that we were able to do for cohort reading, teachers as well, Cohort One, is we offered reading research to classroom practice. So that's a thirty-hour reading course. So what we were trying to do with that work is what we know about the science of reading is that all children learn how to read the same way. And there's a science behind that reading. And so reading research to classroom practice is a way to kind of norm how we look at how children learn to read. So we all come from a centralized starting point in how we view that work. Now, there are layers of tiers of differentiation that need to happen for different schools. But we all need to have a common understanding of how children learn to read so we can serve our children. So when we think about that, what I have is one of our teachers, a state course leader, Cynthia Barber, who has been leading our courses. And she can talk about it much more succinctly than I can.
So like Kelly said, reading research is a five-day course. And we offered it to all of the kindergarten teachers in Cohort One. And we had about a hundred teachers participate. And I think the biggest takeaway from that training and training a lot of those teachers is that it's all about building teacher knowledge as it relates to how children develop as readers and what to do, no matter what your materials are, no matter what programs we have, you know what to do instructionally with your children. So some of the topics we cover in the training is brain research as it relates to reading. We talk a lot about implementation science. So what is effective implementation of a program? What would that look like? We address all five big areas as determined by the National Reading Panel also. And if you look at the data, you can see the pre-test is in green and our post-test scores are in blue. So we offered summer session, we offered a Saturday session. And then we offered sessions to four cohorts during the actual school year, during the school day. So you can see there was about a twenty-six-point jump from the pre-test to the post-test. So I think we had a lot of success. We also are going to offer a makeup training, starting in March, for any of the teachers that weren't able to complete that training. So they'll have opportunity in Cohort One. And then hopefully, next year, we will start with Cohort Two kindergarten teachers and get even more teachers trained in reading research.
I want to share, as we took this approach to reading research to classroom practice and early literacy with students, there were some things that we wanted to keep in mind. Speaking to what she said, we really wanted to take a focus on how we have approaches to literacy and how children learn to read. And so we didn't do it programmatically, recognizing that right now we might have different programs occurring at different schools based on what their needs are. So how do we meet teachers' needs with the materials they already have in place? And we do that by focusing on research programs and approaches, I should say. So when you think about looking at research-based approaches, what we know that we need is we need really knowledgeable teachers in our classrooms, working with students. We need supportive mentors and coaches working alongside them as partners. We need informed and determined administrators to support the work that they're doing in classrooms. And the most important one, I think, is that we need to be willing to take our results seriously, no matter what those results may be, and learn from them and move forward. So with that being said, we took the opportunity to take a small cohort of students. So this is four hundred kindergarten students, close to four hundred, about probably three-hundred-and-ninety-some kindergarten students. And what we did is we took their beginning-of-the-year data and that phonemic awareness skill I was telling you about, first sound fluency. So if you think about it a little bit like action research, we had K teachers who were teaching these students who had reading research to classroom practice. They had early learning partners who helped them give some diagnostic assessments, which is the core assessment to help determine where to begin. They had support and how to offer that work. And their assistants had training. And the students had to have progress monitoring data because that data shows us that they're monitoring what they're doing in the classroom. And so for that group of students, they began eighty-one percent well below benchmark, nineteen percent below benchmark. And as of the middle of the year, right, so this is January data. But as of the middle of the year, this is where those students were. So we were at just over fifty-two percent that had reached proficiency. And these are students who began well below benchmark. Again, a cohort-action research group of about four hundred students. But it was a really exciting beginning to see that when we put all of the pieces together, the partners, the training, the support in the classroom, and materials, that you can see some escalated growth. This is just some early qualitative feedback from principals and teachers and instructional facilitators. Our partners are in their schools every single week, for the most part, unless there's something going on, and they are in classrooms and in professional learning team meetings. One of the biggest pieces that take away, and I shared this at the Project Impact Advisory Board meeting as well from principals, has been, please don't move our partner to another school. People get moved all the time and then you can't, by the time you develop relationship, it creates inconsistency. And the last thing I'll wrap up with, because I know we've been talking a bunch, is I want to talk a little bit about our transitions programming. We had a transitions coordinator hired. And we've been really working hard on this ready-set-K piece. So how are we getting children ready for kindergarten? And so when we think about ready-set-K, there's a lot of pieces to that. And we are just kind of scratching the surface right now that we hope to build on down the road. We had our Countdown to Kindergarten event, which this year, we moved to the SciWorks and had it on the bus route. We did different advertising than before. We went to multiple events around town. We went to Fiesta, we went to Christmas for the city, and did all sorts of different events to kind of get families to come. We offered, we had churches, local churches, that offered to get vans to go into neighborhoods and transport families to make sure they could get there. But what we learned, the reality, is that is you have to have relationships with families in order to get them to come to the events that you're having. So we've reached out since then with Adam at Forsyth Promise. And we're going to work on creating community connections. Our goal is to have a community connector in every neighborhood and area within the city. So when we get ready to do events, it's not just that we're pushing it out from here. We're actually connecting with someone in the community who can help give the information to families. So we're working on that. Another thing that we have going on is in our pre-K classrooms. For the regular pre-K classrooms, there is no transportation. So parents have to bring their children and they have to pick them up. So we're kind of taking advantage of that pickup time. And we're doing family engagement afternoons at these seven pilot schools that you see here. So dinner is served. The teachers and the transition coordinator works with the families. They're doing activities. And it's always a make and take of something they can take home with them. And there are activities they can do then when they get back home. And then finally, again, like I've said before, outreach at community events and supporting schools and K registrations. And this right here, this slide just depicts, the work of Project Impact goes beyond just of the work you heard here tonight with the Office of Early Learning. You can see that they're going to be helping and supporting a lot of different pieces. When you think about our leadership development that we have going on, they do that support, they're supporting CT3 at our schools. And they do support the summer programming pieces that occur at Cook Literacy Model School. And that's it. I know that's a lot.
Very good. It's very comprehensive. And we appreciate your hard work, Kelly. Of course, I was at the meeting with you with Project Impact Advisory Board. And I would just like the community to know that Project Impact exists because of a significant community service initiative. So it is the goodwill of our community to provide for us this extended opportunity to reach our students with literacy. And I just wanted to, either you, Kelly, or maybe Dr. Emery, can clarify for our community actually what Project Impact has enabled us to do here in the district.
Thank you, because you knew I wasn't going to be able to be quiet. I just want to say, the opportunity afforded this school district is unique. In fact, Project Impact and the work has been recognized around the country for business initiative to raise, what has been raised or pledged, over twenty-five million dollars with a forty-million-dollar goal. We started early with six additional pre-K classrooms. We're now up to nineteen. And part of that has been that the fourteen funded by Project Impact, Paula Grubbs was able to get a significant number of them licensed by the state. And so we actually gave Project Impact back some money because we were able to get state funding for some of those classrooms. And we'll continue to work on compliance so that as a district, we tap into those state dollars. And that helps us create sustainability. You've heard about a lot of the investment here tonight in the pathway programs, the training. There's also a leadership component that is completely funded by Project Impact. So what we've been able to do with Dr. Kobel and the instructional leadership, we're now in our fourth cohort of district leaders, as well as more than one and a half million-dollar, both cash and in-kind investment from BB&amp;T through their Leadership Institute. So our folks are getting to take advantage of a corporate-level leadership development that we wouldn't otherwise have. And so I just want to echo, Madam Chair, what you said. The opportunity also to try some strategies because part of the Project Impact philosophy is that you can use these dollars to do something different and new or bold. And if it doesn't work, they're okay. They just want us to collect the data and say, does this work or does this not work? And as Kelly said, some of the direction And as Kelly said, some of the direction or effort may change here as a result of the data we've been able to collect. I also want to encourage you all, the position funded is really, it's not just Project Impact, it was really meant to be an early learning literacy evaluative position. So other programs that you may try or that schools pilot, there's certainly a dedicated individual now to be sure we can collect the metrics around that and determine how successful those projects or pilots may be. I can't say enough about what an incredible opportunity it has been for us as a district to see our business community, which is, Project Impact is the business community, to rally around the literacy effort, and we're just so incredibly grateful. I would also be remiss if I didn't, in the same breath, mention that we would not have an Office of Early Learning if it weren't for the Kate B. Reynolds Foundation who gave us those initial dollars to hire Kelly and to get an office up and running. And for those of you who work in the district, you know, we had exceptional children pre-K and we had Title I pre-K and we had Smart Start, and we had none of these things coordinated under one aligned umbrella. And in the last year, having this office, I think you all can see that making sure that everything's sort of moving in the right direction together and not operating separately is beginning to show us some really significant results for our children. So I'm really proud of these folks and all the hard work that they've done, and I wish Paul was still here to say how very grateful we are for this huge financial support.
And I just kind of want to piggyback on that by saying that financial support has been tremendous, but also the community resource support. So there's a new member on the board who's a provost at Winston-Salem State University, and I reached out to him immediately after the last meeting, and he is going to meet with me. He's an expert in early literacy and is currently serving on state panels, and I know is going to have a wealth of information to share with me about how we can think outside of the box and think a little bit differently about how we approach this work when we come to you with more information about what future asks might look like for Project Impact. So it's nice to have those connections through the board, to be connected with community folks, and meeting them out and about at multiple events. So that's a good connection for us as well.
And I would just extend that Dr. Anthony Graham is the new provost at Winston-Salem State University, and he and I are good friends from North Carolina ENT State University because he was the former dean of education there. So we are super excited that he's now in our community and lending his expertise and in the same line of talking about the challenge to do something bold, new, and different. I was excited to hear about Dr. Roseburg bringing to the attention of the Curriculum Committee Freedom Schools. And I would definitely like for Project Impact to consider how we can incorporate the Freedom School concept as a part of that summer intervention strategy. I think it would have a great impact on the stress level of literacy in a particular demographic. Of course, African-American students, you know, have the lowest literacy rates according to our third-grade EOG, so I think that the Freedom School might be able to help assist with increasing the literacy in that demographic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Kelly.
Yes.
I'm curious about the reading research, that you said it looked into how children develop as readers. Did it fall on one side of either whole language or phonics-based, or where did that?
Such a great question.
Where did that come in?
We talked about that in the board as well. So when you, which has kind of impacted how we're re-looking at our summer programming. So when we look at our summer programming, there are multiple schools of research. So I will begin this by saying you can find research to support just about anything you want to support out there, right? But with that being said, what we do know about research, especially from Dr. David Philpatrick, is that systematic, structured phonics instruction is really important for our youngest learners. So when you think about first sound fluency, phoneme segmentation fluencies, those probes that we look at within DIBELS, lots of acronyms there, sorry, when we look at those probes, they're all looking at how well are we addressing early phonemic awareness and early phonics. And so phonemic awareness and phonics are our greatest two indicators for later reading, period. Now that research is universal, it's been here since the National Reading Panel, and that research is not going to, I would not think, change anytime soon. So how do we support that in classrooms to make sure that our students are getting consistent literacy instruction? And so that information has guided me a little bit in how we looked at that summer programming and made it more systematic in nature.
Okay.
Right. I was like, do you want me to tell you the difference between, but I think you already know.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right. Any more? Second? Awesome. Thank you.
Next, we have the Cook Literacy Model School update and request by the principal, Paula Wilkins. Good evening.
For Chair Woodbury, members of the board, and Dr. Emery, I'm excited and a little bit nostalgic, maybe, thinking about the three-year journey with the restart. And so I come before you today to share the story, right? And so thinking about the background of where we started and where we've come and the work yet to be done. So just a little bit of context, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, when they started the legislation governing restarts and the flexibility for school districts to use restart status to turn around persistently low-performing schools, they gave several opportunities for districts to think innovatively about how they can support those schools, both local flexibility and also state flexibility. With that flexibility comes responsibility of how they report the progress and status to the state and also to the school districts about that progress. So this is the first year that the state has required the first update based on that legislation, and that report will be submitted before March 1st, telling the story about our progress as a restart. And so the first part of this presentation will focus on the elements that are required in the report, also with some context, both qualitative and quantitative, about our progress. So there are eight sections that are required in that report that stem from just overall general context to the school profile related to equity, our changes, and conditions related to culture and climate, the flexibilities that we have utilized with our restart, our overall performance progress, and then our summary reflection on where we've done well and where we still need to do some more work, and then our next steps. The report requires that we, of course, have our support of both the superintendent, the finance officer, and reviewing our report with the Board of Education. And the full report is also in your book. So noting the areas for our goals and priorities as a school, it may look like we have a lot of goals, but it is hard to not consider areas that are important related to our academic, social, emotional, and climate, and also our parental and family engagement priorities. So you will notice we have several goals under each, focusing both reading, math, science, as well as TRC, Text Reading Comprehension, and DIBELS, which is Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. And so what we did is we took our baseline of where we were. We took two different things, which is both our, the state looks at how do we overall close the achievement gap, and they give us projections on our baseline to help us set goals incrementally each year for progress. So we use both that, and we also talk as a sit team to say, hey, looking at our current performance and where we've grown previously, how can we set those benchmarks to continue our growth? And so these are all of our goals from an academic perspective. And for culture and climate, as my colleagues noted, in years one and two, we did have quite a bit of a challenge related to staff turnover. And for any successful turnaround, you must maintain consistency with staff as you invest in the human capital in the building. And so this is the first year, as they noted, we've had zero teachers and staff to resign. So that alone is very, very exciting news, but to me, that's only one piece of that puzzle. The second part is the excitement in the culture. So I'm going to laugh because we have a staff group text and I just have to anecdotally talk about this every day and night. It's on buzz. But the great thing about it is it's focusing on the work, it's focusing on the support of each other, it's focusing on shouting out who's doing great work, great learning in the classrooms. We get pictures, we get student work, we get joy in learning. And for me, when I'm saying, do I want to be a principal today? Those are my reminders and cup fillers about what we do to change the lives of our students. So that has really, even though small, been a really impactful piece to help support our growth and our improvement with culture. In addition to that, we can't think or forget about our student behavioral needs. Some real key pieces that we've had to look at is our reduction in suspensions, both in-school and out-of-school suspensions, but also looking at our office discipline referrals. Though they may not result in a suspension, any loss in learning time is an impact on a child overall as far as progress and outcomes. Reducing staff turnover was another focus priority. Family engagement has also been a key focus since our initial restart. We wanted to focus on not only just the parent survey rate of the number of parents responding to our survey, but we wanted to look at the number who say they've attended events and the number actually attending events as well, as well as our community volunteers and support in the school. So how do we increase the amount of what we call eyeball-to-eyeball time to help impact the overall outcomes of our students? So those are our goals. So what do we know about the performance history of Cook? It has been deemed as perpetually low-performing for consecutive years, and that's a part of what was the synergy around the restart and the urgency for change back in 2016 when the school was restarted from Cook Elementary to Cook Literacy Model School. And yes, I do have a big thing about here in Cook Literacy Model School versus Cook Elementary. I'm saying, some people might say there's something in the name, but I believe a name is important, and that is our school name. We have to remember that. So I always say Cook Literacy Model School because I'm very proud of the work that we've done. The school was restarted, of course, multiple times before or turnaround model was selected. Prior to the 2016 restart, there was a transformation model implemented, which was not successful as it relates to student outcomes and continuing to not meet student growth outcomes. Also, we have noted in the past eight years, the student, the school only met growth once, and in 2018 exceeded growth, which we're also excited about. When we began the restart, the school's overall composite, and when we talk about composite, that's both math, reading, and science outcomes for grades three through fifth, was under 10% when we began in 2016. So a lot of what I'll talk about is what was the baseline in spring 2016, and for the most part, I'm going to talk about most of the data that's actually public information for 2016, 17, and 2017, 18. I will give some updates as available that I can share about our current performance for the 2018, 2019 school year. We are currently removed off the state low-performing list, however... I'm so glad y'all are here with us. However, we're continuing to be on the perpetually low-performing list, but if we continue to exceed growth, we will come off that list as well. Our school achievement has doubled since we began the restart in 2016. So school leadership, I don't like to talk about this per se, but there is a section that talks about who are your school leaders and what was the process of their selection. So in that, I just discussed the fact that I was never a principal before, and this is my first principal leadership opportunity, had lots of other leadership roles on a district level, but the first leadership opportunity as a principal. In 2016, we employed a design team that was responsible for helping to get the core of the restart started. Those folks were our initial leadership team that helped to guide the implementation of both the curriculum, behavioral outcomes, and family engagement efforts for Cook. Our current school leadership configuration has adjusted since we began with that design team. Now we focus on using the MTSS, or Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, model, where we have an engagement side of the house and we have an academic side of the house, and we have support structures on each end. We've also enlisted the opportunity, culture, and teacher leadership roles as critical factors to help move the progress in our school building. So district support for the restart, the district selected that restart would be the turnaround model with a literacy focus back in 2016 for Cook. There was an incentive opportunity for recruitment for quality staff, which was 8% beyond the base pay. And I want to talk a little bit about the 8%, and you also see some information in your board book about the roles. And so the 8%, I hear so much, sometimes people say, you get 8% because you work at Cook. My first reaction is, uh, no. 8% is about the heightened expectations for accountability, the high expectations for results, the work and input. So we may have a Saturday professional development, but that's reminded of that expectation. So the inputs are higher than expected, but also the expectations are higher. So we talk about that a lot, that that's what the 8% is about. It is not just because you work at Cook. There's also a differentiated calendar and school day for Cook. So Cook has a five-day, five additional days at the front part of the year beyond the regular calendar, and then an additional 30 minutes per day. So when we calculate it, and I'll talk about that in just a minute, that equates to additional school days in the total. Differentiated PD support our educator growth. We always look at a model versus year one are new teachers versus second and continuing teachers for professional development support. And then we also just have flexibility for innovation and to make mid-course corrections when things aren't working. I'll be the first to sign up, I'll put something out there, and as I call it, the peeps say, that's not working. So give me feedback on what we need to think about and why, and what evidence do we have? And my people will testify that I do push quite a bit, but push with support is always the goal. Next section is about our overall profile as a school. We have 48 staff members currently, with 97% of those that are certified staff members for our licensed staff. And then I gave you a picture of turnover. So in 1617, we had 26.6% of our staff turnover, which is higher than both the district and the state average, which we knew we needed to make a really strategic effort to respond to. And as I said, zero teachers turned over. The one classified staff member that we lost is somebody who went to another county who was able to get a part-time teaching position that they were not able to get in our district. Years of experience, we have 10% of our staff with less than a year of experience, but over 66% of our staff have five-plus years of experience, which I think is a very great asset when you think about those who are ready for high-need situations, but also have the skills and competencies to support both learning and social-emotional outcomes for students. Economically disadvantaged, we're a community eligibility program school. That just means our students get, are 100% free and reduced lunch. They get free breakfast, free lunch, and for our after-school program and after-school activities, they also get dinner as well. Our school enrollment, we're excited to see the trends and our increases in student enrollment. So in 2016, 17, we had 231 students enrolled, and that includes having another school embedded on our campus during that time. Now, in 2018, 19, our enrollment has increased to 255 students, which, if you think about taking out the school within the school from the first year, we've been able to successfully grow our enrollment. But we still recognize that we have approximately about 200 students that are residential to Cook that are currently attending other schools, and it has been a strategic-focused priority for us to reclaim our residential students back to Cook. Demographics, we're 89% African-American, 9% Hispanic, and 2% other ethnicity. Culture and climate, the numbers we always have to look at. So from a discipline perspective, when we look at our suspension... So from a discipline perspective, when we look at our suspensions and our in-school suspension, what you'll notice in the first column, it's about the number of students in the total. The second column is about the number of days or incidences. So there are some students who have multiple incidences, but what you will note is that in 2016, we had over 298 total suspensions. We were able to decrease those to 149. Please understand, suspension is not the answer, nor is it ever our goal, and we continue to work with practices to limit the number of times that students lose opportunities for learning. Mobility, and honestly, this was probably the one thing that took my breath away in taking the job. So when I entered in 2016, over 60% of our students left at some point in time. So when you think about turnover and turnaround, if you have staff turnover and you have student turnover, how are you going to make this turnaround happen? And so for us to look from 2015, 16, to last year going from almost 60% student mobility to a little under 40%, I think is a great sign of progress, but we recognize we still need to continue to decrease that number. We also have our information about our average student attendance and has been another strategic priority for us to focus on increasing our student attendance. Not as bad as some, but could always be a little better. So what were the flexibilities during our restart process? So I noted we start, we have an early five-day start. In 2016, 17, we also had an extended school year. Last year, we came to the board and we gave data about the extended school year, and our attendance numbers were not high enough for us to continue to recommend that the school districts support that extended five-day end-of-day. And I will also share beginning-of-year comparisons for first five days from last year and this year in the second part of this presentation. We have 30 additional minutes for extended learning time daily. We have a differentiated calendar. We use differentiated assessments to support our student learning. Through American Reading Company, we use something called the Independent Reading Level Assessment called the ERLA. And the ERLA has been instrumental. Everybody knows you get a weekly email from me about ERLA, about what we're doing to grow our students in reading, and how do we know that evidence is valid, and what are our next steps? So it's about being relentless about our progress and having tools ongoing. So when we think about DIBELS, and we think about TRC, or we think about interim assessments, those are never assessments that will give us enough data to help to target and prioritize our support for students. We need an ongoing daily tool and system that can give us that evidence. We've used other tools as well, partnering with Appalachian State University, using the Early Reading Screening Inventory to help us identify and to close gaps with our students. As a restart, we also are eligible for the class size waiver, so in some of our K3 classes, they are larger than the state average. But honestly, initially, there were some concern about that, but when you get an experienced teacher who knows how to support student learning, we've actually had less decrease, we've had decreases in discipline incidences and grades that have higher class sizes than we've ever had before. We have extended learning opportunities both for after-school and for summer programs as well, as was mentioned by Ms. Benheim, for the project impact update. And then our opportunity, culture roles, and teacher leadership positions. So what does our data look like? So when we talk about performance data, we of course have proficiency and growth, and I love to really share, for a school like Cook, we have to live in the land of growth first because our proficiency is one that may take longer to help us achieve. Especially from a reading standpoint, we started in 2016 with 4% or less of our students who were on grade level for reading, and so we have to think about how do we grow their skill to help work towards proficiency. And as noted earlier, our early learning has to be the critical focus, and our continuity with focusing on mobility to help us with that. So reading performance from 2016, and this is spring to 2018, and I'm going to highlight a couple of key focus data points. So you see this zero highlighted? So remember I said in 2016, we had a school within our school? So 16.7% of those students were the other school. 0% were the students at Cook in third grade who met reading end-of-grade proficiency. So we did see a bump in 2017 with 28.6% of our students proficient, but then you see in 2018, we went to 9.1%. Well, why did that happen? You heard Ms. Carper, nope, she had a 3-4 combo. We had two teachers to leave mid-year, and so we had a huge shift in the dynamics of students, learning new teachers, adjusting to teaching two different curriculums because the end of the day, it was better to get an experienced teacher to learn two curriculums than to go with a long-term sub. So that was the choice we made. Ideally, was that the choice I would want to make? No. But in service of students, having a quality teacher to support their learning, that was our choice. And it was one that ultimately, we're continuing to think about what do we do this year to help continue to grow student learning. But I also want you to look at cohorts, which is really important to me. So we look at the fourth-grade cohort in 2017 to 2018 and their increases in proficiencies. We still had some gains with students overall, though we did see some losses. And this is just highlighting the increase from fourth grade and fifth grade over the two years from the restart. Math proficiency, same kind of level of focus, we saw great gains in fifth grade last year for math, and we also saw some positive gains in third grade. We did not see as much gain in 2018 with that fourth grade again, but if you look from cohort to cohort, 7.1 to a little bit under 5 relatively in that cohort, those students were the same, but we still recognize that they continued the need to grow. Science is our kind of really bright star point. When you think about students who don't have high proficiencies in reading, but they have really high proficiencies in science, how does that happen? Well, I think there's a lot of different reasons that that happens. First of all, engaging with the hands-on learning for science. We had a direct science lab with weekly labs of instruction that helped to support our students. We also have OG that uses the morphology piece to focus on the word structure to help students attack vocabulary. Those were two really critical skills that helped us with our progress with science and are still some of the strategies we continue to use today. And by the way, we're still seeing science on the rise, and the other big thing is science is not just a fifth-grade taught subject. We teach science K through 5, which is not always the case in a lot of elementary folks. So 43.4% increase in science since our restart. So here's where I do want to spend a little bit of time talking about 2016 to 2018. So in 2016, this is prior to the restart, we were at a not-meet growth status for Cook with the negative 3.86 growth index. So when you think about our school performance grade, which is a combination of 20% growth and 80% achievement or proficiency, here's where we were. So if you think about a school, I said, growth is the place we have to live, is Cook. We started off with negative growth. I'm just calling it what it is. And so we had 12% achievement when we started, and this gives a total score, and that's combining achievement and growth of 21. So our first year of the restart, we met growth because we moved from a negative 3.86 growth index to a negative .4. Were we happy with those results? It was progress, but no. So when we look at our overall school performance grade, it went to a 28. But last year, I think is one of our huge bright spots. We moved to a positive 3.46 index with doubling our achievement score for 37 overall school performance grade. So let's look at this on a continuum, because I feel like we got to live, breathe this for a second. So here's where we started in 2016. We moved in 2017 to the negative .40, and 2018, this is where we moved. So on a continuum, this is how much change, statistically significant change, that happened at Cook. So ideally, are we satisfied with this result? Nope. We continue to push for greater and far exceeding outcomes and expectations. But this is a 6.92 growth increase in our index since the restart. So what does this achievement data mean? We're no longer a low-performing school based on our 2018 spring results for 2018, 2019. We exceeded our growth. We are three points closer on the 15-point scale to a letter grade of D. I'm not celebrating this, but it's about the progress and seeing it in context. So the state does a 15-point scale. Anything 39 as a school performance grade and lower is an F, and a 37 is getting closer to moving to that 40 to get to the D of a school performance grade, and the achievement has doubled. You will also note, one of the things that we do for communication and supporting our families is we do highlights after each year. How do we make progress? What were the big changes for our school as a whole? 2016, this was our highlights, and we noted our reading, math, science meeting growth and decreasing of our mobility. And then 2017, 18, of course, we highlighted not being a low-performing school, our math, reading increases, as well as some of our achievement changes. So summary, what does this all mean? Because I've said a whole lot at this point. So we recap our restart, we have to look at it in chunks as we share our story. So looking at year one of our restart, which was really the toughest year, or maybe it was year two, I'm not sure, they were both tough. Year one, we had a new staff, very few continuing folks that our students knew. So it was about building relationship and connecting with our students, with each other and with our families. We had to figure out how do we constructively respond to needs and thinking about needs beyond academics. And I said one day, I'm going to write a book, "It's Not About the Read," because it was not just about the reading. So reading manifests itself in so many other ways, and how do we think about holistic approach to educating children and supporting our families? And we had to think about that as a staff. By the end of the year, though, the tough reality is we had to think about retraining and rebuilding our team, because our dream team, as we call it, this is just the first round of our year-one team, we had to think about who's ready to come to Cook. So we had all this excitement and fervor, a lot of news media, and a lot of buzz that got people in the door the first year, but what will get people in the door the second year? And we had to be strategic about those efforts. So learning, we had to be vulnerable and to admit, no matter the experience, sometimes you just don't know what you don't know, and you have to be open to learn it. And I'm looking at Ms. Hopkins, she's one of our first-year teachers, that she, we talk about learning and what does change look like, and it is really a process that we always go through. We need parent leads to connect and support and help us build trust, and we have to be clear in our expectations for our students and our families, so they know what's important to us and what's the priority. But we also have to think about the social and emotional learning needs of both our families and students. So we instituted lots of small groups focused on social-emotional learning, implementing restorative practices, and partnering with the CrossNorah School for Therapeutic Services. That was the recap of year one. Year two, we had to think about how do we increase staff and student expectations? So we started with initial expectations, now how do we tighten those up? So some of those words about building a culture focused on practice, and this was really tough, because for somebody who's been teaching 20 years and you talk about implementing a coaching model, you can imagine in some places, that was not well-received, which led us to, how do we build a growth mindset culture about never arriving in education, but always growing to get better? And that was a shift in year two that we had to undergo as a school to really focus on, the principal gets coached, and everybody else does too, because this is the continuum and the vehicle to help us move forward. We also had to have a clear focus on the curriculum. So what are the key building blocks to help us move student achievement forward? And we had to name them. And we also had to go back and say, when we did something really wrong year one, it was done. So you imagine for a staff meeting, when I say, "Hey, we did this last year, and we're not doing this again, and here's why." And so on one hand, it was freeing to be vulnerable enough to say, "We didn't do well with this, and it's not moving the needle on our student outcomes." But then on the other hand, it's like, what's the flavor of the month? What's the next thing she's going to ask us to do? But we had to really be strategic about what are our priorities and how will we strategically support them? So what did we learn in year two? Turnaround is really tough work, and we did have to normalize turnover for a while, and that was a part of collapsing some of those classes, reassigning roles for people who signed up to be a coach or an instructional facilitator, but then I said, "Hey, you teach the third grade every day, what can I do to support you?" So that was a really big shift, and for some people, it was a welcome change because it was about being in service to students, and some other people said, "This is not what I signed up for." And so I had to be open to say, okay, so how do we think about our hiring process to get the people who are about, in service of, by any means, supporting students? I have to shift my attitude to be in service of students and adjusting for that. But we also had to reinvent how we would grow and sustain. But the other big piece for me, and I'll be vulnerable, self-care was huge. I had a really big medical scare in year two that made me wake up to say, "I'm not going to die doing the work for Cook, even though I am very committed to this work." So year two was about all of those things. Now year three, where are we? We're being more intentional in prioritizing our work, our academic focus. I think if you asked any of our staff members, they can tell you for the most part very clearly, what is it that we do at the Cook House that we affectionately call our school? And what are the routines and procedures that we're implementing with the No-Nonsense Nurture Framework for student support with behavioral focus on clear directions, positive narrations, incentives, and reward systems, as well as building life-altering relationships with our students? We had to continue to relaunch what it means to be coached and support structures for coaching, but we also had to think about how do we grow both our student and our staff culture? And so we've implemented a lot of different things to help to grow student and staff culture, and then absolutely having a priority on parent and community engagement. So we had to think about what does it mean to be authentic, and what are the places that people are going to dawn the doors that we can capture and support our parents in learning about school and supporting their students? One of the things that has been very refreshing this year is we've had more events that have allowed students to share with their parents and to lead the learning about what's going on in schools. So our student-led conferences, we've done one in the fall, and we'll do our second round next month for one of our early release days for Cook. So what are our next steps? We have to think about systems and processes to support the needs at Cook. Transportation sustainability has to be a critical focus to help us to continue to decrease our mobility. So we've had a proposal and discussion with the district about the idea of zone matching. So how do we take students in a various zone, say hypothetically, Kimberley Park, Ashley, Cook? So if students move within those zones, how do we make sure they can still go to the school that they love and want to remain? We cannot control the transientcy and the needs of families and the economic conditions, but why can't we think as a system what we can do to keep more stability of our students in a school location as much as possible? And that's something I will continue to fight for, and I would love to get ongoing support in that area. Innovative collaborative opportunities to engage families. So we've scratched the surface to think about how we can engage our families more, but we know there is more work to do, whether through social media or other outlets to connect with our families. And then retention of staff is always going to be a critical need in a turnaround situation. And as Alice Day mentioned so eloquently, she wonders who's going to be here next year? Well, I do too. So we have this great momentum and all these wonderful people who are supporting the work and committed to the work, but who's still in next year? And that's something we have to continue to think about as a pipeline. How do we partner with universities to get teachers who are credentialed in turnaround leadership? Or to also get more teachers that become a pipeline to become teachers in training at Cook? And then a continued relentlessness to improve literacy outcomes. So we've made some pretty great progress along the way, but we recognize that literacy still remains our still remains our challenge. And we have to be relentless about problem-solving and structuring our volunteers to support our identified gaps, and also leveraging more support. So teachers have skill, but we also have to think about how do we increase the adult connective time to help increase our outcomes? So how do we continue to prove at CLMS? I think one of the things I'm most passionate about is sharing our story to change the narrative. And so one of the things that really hits a nerve with me when I'm out in the community and somebody says, you work at that bad school, or you're that F school. And one of the dreams that I have is how do we make sure in our community, we look at schools like Cook and every school who is making progress as a great school for all children? And we have to be committed to change that narrative, because it doesn't happen by chance. The second thing is just encouraging more to volunteer. Because though we have great teachers in place, we continue to have a need to have more support services in our schools. And also verifying and validating what works. So one of the things we are pretty good at at the Cook House is we're very clear what's working and what's not, and why, and what research aligns to continue in the work. We have collaborative arguments with colleagues about this on an ongoing basis, but that's how you get the work done. And then thinking about our creative investment. So we not only need to appreciate our faculty, but figure out how do we address the retention piece and our mobility of both our staff and students? So we've launched something called Come Home to Cook as our campaign to help us reclaim our 200-plus residential students that are not currently attending Cook. So that was whole mouthful, and that's the first part of my update. What questions do you have about the restarted Cook?
So first, I would just like to thank you, Paula, for sharing all of the good news and the news that might be a little challenging, but just understanding that this facility is our collective school district home, so we don't ever have to be embarrassed to share what's going on at any school, because we're in this together. So it's not just, you know, your family, it's our family. And we really appreciate how the teachers have come out tonight to show support of the school and the students. So I'm very inspired and hopeful in the direction that Cook Literacy Model. I'm going to say that correctly and remember that, the direction that you all are definitely going in. I would like to share something that was shared with me, just to have Cook Literacy Model staff and students think about as it relates to setting goals. So I was at a conference on literacy as it relates to African-American males through Gifford County Schools, and actually Dr. Afri Tatum, whose work is premier when it comes to helping African-American males read. One of his main texts is called Reading for Life. And so once we had announced what our goals were for literacy for African-American males, he came up afterwards. And so our goal was 70%. That was, you know, a very robust goal, and we felt super inspired by that. And so he asked 30% of us to stand up when he started to speak to us. And so we were like, okay. He said, y'all fired. Not talking to me, he's not, it's not my boss. But his point was this. Why is it that 30% of the African-American males is good enough to fail? Always reach for 100%, even if you don't get there. Because then it sends a story that I'm going out for all of the students. Even though you may, you know, put those numbers out there, I just ask as a school, you really internalize, we're trying to reach 100% of our students. Okay? And so I just wanted to share that with you, because it was shared with me, and it's, you know, how I try to process, making sure that we go after every single student in our classes, right? So I don't know if anybody else have any questions or comments about where we are right now with Paula's information.
I just have to say, being on the board for four years almost, and watching you grow has been amazing. So my hat is off to all of you, because we followed you closely. And when it first happened, it kind of was scary, you know? We were kind of cleaning house and doing different things, and you couldn't help but wonder, how are you going to pull this off? But by darn, you did. And so did the teachers of Cook. I just got to say, thank you and congratulations. It's been a fun ride watching you.
I just want to make a comment. Some of what we hear sometimes is this about being an experiment, and it's something that I have a challenge with, because we don't experiment with children. We take our work seriously about educating them every day and being strategic about the supports and the people we put in front of them. And so this restart, though it has this like feel and connotation about what does this mean, we're starting over, we're getting rid of people? I'd just like to reframe that. We are working to be more strategic about the inputs in order to get a more strategic output. And so that's important to really reframing the narrative about the work we are doing at Cook. So thank you for that. So next topic piece is the request for the continuation for flexibility and support and district support for Cook. So just a couple of contextual pieces, and these are a lot shorter than my restart presentation, I promise. 2016 announcement, the board decided that Cook would be the first innovation school with the flexibility with the turnaround. It would have annual performance reviews by district staff, and this is not the first time we've done an update to the board about our progress, and we continue to do that annually to think about where we are and where we need to continue to grow. Three-year performance review by the Board of Education, which that's where we are right now. We're at year three to say where we are and where we continue to grow. We want the board to know our results and then to help us decide, where do we move next? And one of the things in the restart announcement is it was about showing evidence of progress towards ongoing improvement based on measures of success. So here were the measures of success. The first one was that students at Cook would achieve more than predicted growth in the state, which is noted by us exceeding growth. Students would demonstrate increased levels of achievement on state and formative and local assessments. So as noted, we doubled our achievement performance since we began. But also, some of our formative assessments have shown great strides and change over time from beginning to end of year. Student enrollment growth was another indicator, as I mentioned, about both reclaiming our students, but also growing our enrollment over time. Teachers would be recruited and retained for a three-year period. Now that's one of the growth indicators of expectation that we have not met. We've not retained all of our staff for a three-year period. And we recognize that, and we're working to respond and do something about that. And what we know, any turnaround effort takes three to five years. So I know we're in year three, but for our staff consistency, I feel like this is year one. And so we think about that as a trajectory. I think that's something that we have to note. Parent and community partnership will increase as measured by attendance at school meetings and surveys, which was noted and shared before. And that Cook was served as a pilot for the district to develop policies and procedures for future innovative schools. So that was the initial release about Cook and the indicators. The 8% differentiated pay for the certified staff, as I mentioned before, was about increasing the scope of work, the investment and expectations for their performance outcomes, weekend day-to-days, which my staff has participated in, summer trainings, weekend trainings, as well as the longer day in the school year. And this is also noted and spelled out specifically in the CLMS roles, compensations, and responsibility piece in the board book as well. Initial recruitment tool to attract highly, high-quality teachers with positive evidence of student outcomes. So one of the first things that we looked for is, what data can you show us that you've had evidence of student outcomes? We still use that as a measure, but our hiring practice has changed slightly. That's important, but it's not the ultimate focus. We want to look at, are you willing to grow? Can you take feedback? And if I gave you some feedback in this interview right now, how would you respond? And how does that feel? So we look at, how do we address some of those qualitative or soft-skill-focused areas that have proved in year two, especially in year three, to be better hiring indicators than alone performance of a staff member in previous contexts? And then the incentive to retain most talented teachers for a school three-year period. So our retention challenges in year one and two, a lot of folks felt the scope of work and the expectations were higher than expected for some veteran teachers. The high needs of the students and families posed great challenges. Staff leaving the school in part to climate. Some staff had difficulty working as a team and seeing the need for coaching and feedback. And these were some of our present realities about our turnover. And year three, we're beginning to gain some consistency, as we've noted several times. So what's the request of the board moving forward? I request that you review the restart flexibilities for 2019 and 2020, 2020 and 21, and we're requesting that the board take action. So currently, the 8% differentiated pay includes, we're looking for the support for that, as well as the continuation of opportunity culture, which is an expansion of teacher leadership, and continued support for the flexibilities of the restart. And we're asking on a trajectory of a three-year period, we're looking at 2018, 2019, 2021, and 2122. So we're asking for three more years to have a really five-year trajectory over the restart process to say, hey, what really worked? And what didn't? And what lessons can we still learn? And what do we want to replicate? Or to continue to expand as a district? What questions do you have about the flexibility proposal?
If I could just share, we made this commitment for the first three years when we opened the restart, the 8%. Certainly, we support that, even though it might take a different form. One of the things that, not living in the school every day, but up until this year, being the immediate supervisor for this school, and that was very intentional, so that they knew they had direct access to the superintendent, and if they had needs or issues, they could hopefully get them resolved quickly, was the whole issue of flexibility. And I know you all have heard me say this. One of the things we've heard tonight is from folks worried about the restart, and I think they have valid issues, because when we launched this project about this time three years ago, we made an assumption that parents were going to be really happy, that we were just going to turn things upside down. And in fact, we learned the hard way that that was not correct. And so part of these initial meetings and trying to get parents involved and hear parent voice is to really not repeat some of what we learned in this process. The other huge piece is the school having flexibility and autonomy to decide how to structure that pay differential. And I think moving from just, this is an incentive to get you to come here, to this is extra work, it's hard work, and then even on into restructuring through opportunity culture has been one of the huge benefits of being a restart. I don't think any time's been wasted by Cook in being able to move quickly. Sometimes in this business, we see something that doesn't work, and we say, well, next year I'll fix it. But being able to fix in the moment or make those changes and having this little additional resource, I think, has been powerfully supportive of what they've been able to do. I just, I have to say this, I'm sorry. I love all of our schools, but I just think we cannot underestimate, and thank you, Lida, for talking about the journey. This school was the lowest-performing school in the state. And in two years, they have come off the low-performing schools list.
I was just going to ask, on the opportunity culture, I know one of the pieces of that is the expand, and one of the ladies talked, expanded impact teacher. Yeah, so I wondered how many, other than that lovely one that spoke to us, do have...
If you give me a second, I would really like to recognize my opportunity culture, if y'all are okay with it, I really would. So I want to start off with Ms. Roper, who I think just went out with her girls. She's our Dean of Culture, which is one of our multi-classroom-level opportunity culture positions. So she not only leads teachers, but she works directly with students, leading groups, as well as leading planning, as well as focusing on the culture piece in our school, working directly side-by-side with teachers. Ms. Ibrahim, please stand. Ms. Ibrahim, yes, is our fifth-grade Expanded Impact Teacher. So the role of an Expanded Impact Teacher is they take on a larger class size with the expectation that they will lead student achievement outcomes. So we look consistently at their student achievement outcomes, as well as serve as a model and a co-teacher for other teachers in the building. So the role is more than just you've been experienced and you have data. The role is really about what are you doing to impact student outcomes and to help grow the culture of learning in the school building. Ms. Taylor, please stand. Ms. Taylor, on the early learning continuum, is our first-grade Expanded Impact Teacher, and both of them get Reach Associates. And Mamie, I want to give a shout-out to Mamie, because Mamie, stand up Mamie, has been the longest employee working at Cook. So she began as a TA, and when I say, when you want a model for a TA who can support student learning in a major way, Mamie is that person. And so as our Reach Associate, she works and has some classroom-level responsibility guided and directed by the teacher to help support student learning in a major way with that larger increased class size. So she gets a stipend for extra duty and responsibilities for that. And Selena Jones, I don't see Selena. Selena is Ms. Ibrahim's Reach Associate to support her. And then I have to recognize two more teachers who are not in position, Expanded Impact or Reach Associate, but they have stepped up in a major way to lead her teacher leadership. So Courtney Morrison, who has been here for quite some time, we're going to have a little Morrison very soon, but she has been here at the school since prior to the restart, and she has a way of supporting students, but getting results in a way that you, if you come in her classroom, you will feel learning and joy and want to be a part of it. Thank you, Courtney. And Alice Day Clark, a third-grade teacher who has stepped up in leading professional development, supporting and being a part of our double-sweep teams, and just lots of other duties as assigned. And I did not mention in this presentation, I don't have an instructional facilitator currently. So IF is me and the peeps you see out there. And we have been really relentless about how do we support each other? How do we support new teachers? It's not ideal, and it's a little bit interesting. But we continue to step up to the plate to lead instruction and to model what we say is important. So I know that was more than you needed, but I really just really had to take a moment to recognize those folks for what they are doing to lead and support instruction in our building.
I could ask a lot more questions, but I know you're probably worn out and...
No, I mean, I want to make sure that I answer...
I can have it offline. I want to hear more about the Orton Gillingham and how you have implemented that. I mean, if you want to give us a two-minute...
Yes, so Orton Gillingham is used for our phonics instructional piece for our daily core, and we utilize that for up to 30 minutes of our literacy instructional block. Our literacy instructional block is 90 minutes. We use it alongside with American Reading Company, which we use for our other components of balanced literacy. So teacher-directed, self-selected texts, writing, accountable talk for our students. So for Orton Gillingham, we use a lot for the word study support, and we also use it for our morphology support for instruction. We have heavy routines, teacher's lesson plan for using a scope and sequence supported through Ron Yoshimoto and the whole class educator model to help provide phonics support instruction. We've had some gaps that we have to think about closing for our ongoing systematic processes for Orton Gillingham. And one of that is, what does an in-house support system look like for supporting OG? Previously, we were able to have a trainer in-house, and we no longer have that. And so teachers who get trained for a week long, it's lots of dense content that they need support to process through. And I've been through that week-long training, but I'm not teaching OG every day. And so it's really, really hard, along with some of the other pieces, for me to be the support person. So that's one of the pieces that we need to look... So that's one of the pieces that we need to look at strategically. The other piece we have to look at is, there are gaps in what we think about supporting phonemic awareness, especially in our early grades, that currently, we've not been able to figure out on a systematic end, how do we support those gaps for instruction with Orton Gillingham? So that was like the short version. But we can talk more about it.
Paul, I just want to say thank you. I think as Dr. Emery said earlier, when we started, I remember going to the media center and thought, okay, this is, everybody's going to be real excited about what's happening, and we were a little, I personally was a little taken back by that, but as you said, it's continual learning, it's continual process. I hope as the district looks at other restarts, we kind of learn from what we did. But you have opened up the Cook House to so many visitors, and sometimes, like, I saw you Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and staff, and, but you know, instruction kept happening. I mean, it never stopped, and there's some great things, you know, I could, we never really wanted to leave the classroom, you'd say, come on, we got to go, because it was just great things that were going on. And so thank you for your commitment to the, to the students each and every day, and for putting out there that, you know, we didn't have all the answers, and we had to keep going back, and that continuous improvement and that flexibility. So I'm like Lida and Dr. Emery, I'm very proud of the work that's happened there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Last piece, promise less than three minutes. Last piece, calendar flexibility. As we move into 2019 and 2020, we need to think early and ahead of what our calendar flexibility looks like for Cook. So just as some background, in 2016, 2017, we had 23 and a half. And when I say days of extended learning, it is not in physical days, it's more in time calculations. So we had five additional days on the front end prior to the district starting, five additional days on the back end. We had extended hours to 30 minutes a day. That totals altogether 23 and a half days of extended learning. 2017, 2018, we went down to 20. Well, you probably asked, well, why did you go from 23 and a half to 20? Well, here were some shifts that we did in our professional development calendar. So we kept the five start, early start, five late closure, plus the 30-minute additional, but we asked for protected professional development days in the calendar that other schools in the district did not have, to protect and to focus on strategic professional learning for our staff, which was really helpful, along with two additional early release days. And so that's why you see the decrease in time. So I just want to give a data point of 2017 and 2018. So you'll see our number of absences for the first five days of school. So we had zero percent to up to about two and a half percent of students absent on the first five days. The reason on the Friday we had no data is because the district had a professional development kickoff in 2017 that our teachers attended, which was a part of the Professional Learning Day. So we went in the morning to Ron Clark, and then in the afternoon, we had ongoing professional development for our staff. This year in 2018, numbers are slightly higher for the percentage out of students, which we're continuing to look at and explore, but nothing like the data numbers that were the reverse of that, of the number actually in school on the last five days of school last year when I presented to the board. So what is the request for 2019, 2020? We want our staff early start again. We started just a few days earlier than what the district started to give our teachers a jumpstart for home visits, which is a requirement and an expectation for our staff, as long with additional professional development to support our curriculum. Our first day of school will be Monday, August 19th, again, a week before the district. And we're asking for two Cook early release days again, which would be September 25th in the proposal, and February 19th. Again, following that Wednesday pattern, we worked with transportation to adjust our schedule slightly for our dismissal, to make it work so it would not impact the bus schedules for other schools in the district. And so totaling, thinking about that time, we would use that for, that one second early release is already a district early release day. What we're requesting is, on the front end, we make it a full professional development day for our staff to help with things like student-led conferences and our data days that sometimes we do on Saturdays, which I know would help our staff if we could do it within the work time, but also combine this with the existing professional development early release day with the district. So this does decrease the time to 18 days, but still beyond the minimal expectation for the state for learning time in hours and days. So that's our proposal for 2019. What questions do you have for me?
Paula, when you talk about the extension of days, but we're calculating it by way of time, how does that translate to in the classroom? So how many more hours are students getting in the classroom?
I have to look at that figure, but if you give me a second, I have it written down, I can email it to you.
Oh, that's fine.
Because the total amount of time. But I can tell you, in our day, as far as learning time, that's how we get, a 90-plus-minute block, plus an additional 30 minutes of self-selected, what we call wide reading for our students. So we really have 120-minute literacy block.
That explains...
Which most schools don't have.
That explains the extra time and that extra 30 minutes that you dedicate to that reading piece.
Correct.
Okay.
I want to applaud you for having your teachers do the home visits. How many years since the restart have you been doing those? Has that been all three years?
Since year one.
Okay.
So year one, and what, so we've done them a little bit differently each time. So last year was the most different of all. We used open house as the first gateway, and then we did home visits for any other person that didn't come to open house. But before, we embedded it in the early start time. So next year, thinking about the calendar, I want a protected day where we all go out together, because scheduling was a challenge, even though I gave the time. If we make the committed date, a lot of the research shows better support, but also more power in the numbers, of more staff being able to connect with families. One of the things we continue to find out, especially with the kindergarten assessment for health, how do we get on the front end with that? And so we were able to partner with the downtown health plazas and some other places to make sure I did not have to suspend students. But if we could just really work on that a lot earlier, and getting with our families so that is not the issue, and getting them the health appointments if we need it, is something that we really, really want to focus on.
Right.
So that's finally it for me.
And so I will say, Paula, that I will take some blame for the extended time, because I sent Paula about eight questions earlier today after I read through her report. So I think some of that time was spent answering questions, and that is just in full disclosure to this community that Paula was very attentive to some questions and concerns that we had in looking at the presentation earlier, and I'm glad that she could follow up with us this evening regarding those questions. Thank you, Paula.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Thank you. The next item is our Buildings and Grounds Committee Report by Board Member Crowley.
Okay. We held community meetings to get feedback on new locations for two elementary schools. Last week, we had two meetings at Ashley Elementary, where we got input on possible sites for the new, for the new Ashley. The 2016 bond will fund the design of a new Ashley, but there is currently no funding for land and construction. But today, we were provided, or we just got an email today providing options for getting the necessary funds for this project outside of waiting for a future bond. So that will be on our next Buildings and Grounds agenda. Last night, we had a forum at Brunson Elementary and got feedback on, on future site possibilities for that. Brunson Elementary is on the bond, and we hope to have a site for this project in the next 30 to 60 days. We also, in Buildings and Grounds, voted on and approved a Duke Energy easement for Conoc Elementary, and we got a report from Lauren Richards, who's in operations under the Child Nutrition Program, for starting a pilot program at Spies Elementary. We're looking at getting that started on April 22nd, which happens to coincide with Earth Day. Program is intended to be educational and environmentally conscious, where school waste will be composted. And as an update, on the 2016 bond, on March 5th, the county will have the bond sale, so the funds, which should be about $85 million, will be available at the end of the, at the end of the month, at the end of March, so that we can start our next tier of bond projects.
Thank you. Next, we will have the Policy Committee Report by Board Member Calvert-Hayes.
Thank you. We talked today, before we came in session here, about our policies and what we have, and I think Mr. Harvey came up and gave a little presentation, so I'm going to try to do as well as he did. But we talked about professional conduct, you know, what do we expect? And that is policy 41610, if you want to go through the 300 pages with the policies. We also talked about suspension, demotion, and dismissal. How does that happen? And that is policy 4126.11. You can read about that also in that 300 pages. We talked about employee grievance procedure, what happens with grievance, and a lot of people may wonder what that is, but that is a time that the board members listen to what the teacher or employee has to say has happened, and that is a second opinion on what has happened, and it is called grievance. You may know about that, you may not, but there's a whole lot on grievance, if you'd like to read about that. That's policy 4135.4. That is to give an orderly solution to problems affecting employees of the Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Schools. We also talked about policy, now, won't you look this one up too, policy 115C, and that's dismissal or demotion for a cause, and that'll tell you all about what happens and what you shouldn't be doing to get dismissed from our school system. And it would be good to kind of review this. It is long, but if there are things that are concerning you and you want to know about it, it's kind of the laws of the land for the Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Schools. We talked about bylaws, which is policy 9000, and amendments to the board agenda. So like I said, if you want to know about our policies, feel free to either contact our attorney, because she knows a lot more about that than I do, and get involved in what you need to know. And we will be reporting back, there are a lot more policies, so you'll hear more from me on policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Curriculum Committee Report, and since Board Member Burke is not here, from our understanding, Board Member Kaplan will share with us a report.
Last Tuesday, Chair Burke called the Curriculum Committee meeting to order. Dr. Karen Roseborough introduced guests from the Children's Defense Fund, who provided a detailed overview of the Children's Defense Freedom School Program. Mr. Robin Sally presented the integrated reading curriculum, including weekly themes for levels and corresponding grades. Dr. Karen Roseborough discussed the State Restart Plan for Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Schools' Reimagine Zone Plan, which allows recurring low-performing schools to adopt charter-school-like flexibilities. Dr. Roseborough announced the five elementary schools that have been identified by the North Carolina Innovative School District for State Takeover, and some of the principals from those schools discussed the flexibility that the State Restart Plan would give their schools. Chair Burke gave a TNTP contract update. Dr. Kenneth Simonton discussed the District-wide Initiative of Social and Emotional Learning Task Force, beginning in October 2017, anticipating full district implementation by 2020. Dr. Simonton also outlined the high school curriculum course changes for 2019 through 2020. Kelly Benheim, Program Manager for Early Learning, and Brittany Guy, Personalized Learning Coordinator, stated the goals and standards based grading is replacing the antiquated Excel sheet with centralized access to all data, along with the supportive data for the decision. The meeting was adjourned.
Thank you. Next, we have several action items. The first item to consider is an approval of the continuation of the flexibility for pay differentiation for Cook Literacy Model School. Can I get a motion? Sir moved. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. Where do we receive the funding for the eight percent increase? Where does the eight percent come from, the additional funds?
The eight percent has come off the district administrative portion of Title I.
And would that, the reason I say that, and I don't want to, we may need to take this up later, but I know we have proposed several other restarts, and so would that, would that be the same thing for those, those restarts as well?
I think they have, they would have to, in this first planning year, decide if incentive is a part of that. So the good news in a planning year is that you'd have a year to look at what would happen there, yes. Because if you, if you have multiple schools, then you're going to have to look at where are those funding sources. The first year for the restarts is a planning year.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any more questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor? I think that's unanimous. The next item is approval of the 2019-20 school calendar for Cook Literacy Model School. Can I get a motion?
Sir moved.
Second. Did you get who said, did the second, Alex? Is there any, is there any discussion about the change in the calendar? All in favor? I think that's unanimous, too. The next item is the approval of the Amendment to Agreement with Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. Hopefully, you all have kind of went through that. Can I get a motion?
Okay.
Okay. Second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? I think that's unanimous. The next item is approval of the Amendment to Agreement with True Lions Student Credit Union. Is there a motion? Move approval. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. The next item is approval of the Duke Energy Easement at Conoc Elementary School. Sir moved. Somebody second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous. The next item is approval of Budget Amendment Number Four and Transfer Number Four.
Sir moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Our last item, before we take the motion, I need to announce that Dr. Kenneth Simonton has been offered our interim superintendent position, and he has gladly accepted, and we're very excited. And so tonight, we will need to have a motion to approve his new contract and to also amend our current superintendent's contract. She will stay on in a consultant role for the next 60 days, I think. Okay. Second. Any discussion?
Well, hold on, hold on. Are we voting on them independently, or are we voting on two different things? Are we voting on the contract for the interim? Are we voting on the extension for Dr. Emery separately, together? I'm just...
So the, in the amended agenda, we brought them together as one item.
Yeah. And so to clarify, we're voting on contracts, but the vote for the interim superintendent, as most personnel items happen, that happened in close session, and this is to vote on the contract?
Absolutely. So... Any more discussion or questions? All right. All in favor? All opposed? All right. So we have some consent agenda items left. We have... Uh, we have three, and if I can get a motion to approve these items. Second, somewhere. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right.
Dr. Emery, um, your time here has, um, has involved a lot of hard work and a lot of lifting, but also, um, you have to have a little fun. And so, uh, we wish you well on, uh, your endeavors in the state. And, uh, so, uh, our wonderful media team has put together, uh, a little video to kind of wish you well.
I just want to say how much we appreciate all that you do for our district. Oh, my gosh, it worked! This is Love the Bus Week, and this is the day to love on your bus drivers. Thank you so much for all that you do. We could not make it, and we appreciate your patience. You wanted to take a moment to wish you happy Thanksgiving. It's like having the Rolling Stones, uh, for teachers, you know? We're so glad you could be here for our first parent forum. Which seems like an incredible amount of money. It makes me so excited to see the kind of energy that you bring back to a new school year. Thank you so much for great opportunities and discussions and training and outcomes. And it's an honor for me to have this opportunity. Well, I'm very grateful for all of you and your hard work. On a team, we have to have balance.
So I'm asking that, of course, Board Member Jones, come, um, with me now to the podium to recognize Dr. Emery for her service, um, here in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. Obviously, I've not known Dr. Emery but for a few months. Um, but I think she is a very intelligent and exceptionally kind person. And that goes a long way in this time. So it has just been such a pleasure to get to know you as a person that is so kind and sincere. Um, and I think that you have taught me so much, um, as an educator to an educator, and I appreciate that time. I, um, thank Dr. Emery additionally for her sincere service, commitment to students and staff here at Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, and her efforts to progress public schools throughout our state and probably our country. So I really, um, wish you happiness and health and continued success in your journey. And I would like to present to you these flowers on behalf of the school board and our community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Um, so, um, thank, thank you Chair Woodbury. Um, you know, um, I guess this is five years working, um, together. We started off, uh, really working on a bond right out of the gate. And, uh, I think your, your effort from you and your staff helped that bond pass in every precinct, um, which had never happened before in Winston-Salem Forsyth County. Um, I know how much you're committed to the classroom and our teachers. And so, um, you know, your vision of our Teacher Leader Academy is taking off. And, um, so we thank you for that. I know that it's been important that you have worked very hard with, uh, with staff to build capacity, uh, in this district. And you have done that. And we heard from Paul Wiles, and, um, we had an update on Project Impact. And our business community before had never gotten behind Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools the way it has gotten behind them now. And I think we know that that is because of, um, your leadership and, and really working with them to help them understand the needs that we have. And so, um, we, um, as, as Chair Woodbury said, um, your kindness and your care, um, you see every day. And so it's, it's no, um, I'm not surprised that as a district, we paused under your leadership to take a step back and to realize what our core beliefs and our core goals and values were. And so, um, for the five years that I have served with you, it has been a pleasure to see someone who, um, makes their decisions based on character and integrity. And, uh, we always know your why, and your why is always about students. So we wish you well. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Dr. Emery, we would also like the other board members to say a few words, since this would be your officially last school board, um, meeting. I would like to start with Board Member Burke's remarks. She sent those to me, although she, of course, is sick. But she wanted you to know that she thanked you for your service to our district, and she wished you continued success in your new role. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Emery, for your years of service. We all wish you the best as you embark on the new challenge, which will impact students across North Carolina. We are confident you will make all of us proud.
Um, four years ago, I met Dr. Emery when I asked her to speak to my teen study. And needless to say, we were all impressed with her knowledge and talent. And since then, I've had the privilege of getting to know her better professionally, as well as personally. And I wish her success as she embarks on her new adventures in Raleigh, working with our state superintendent. And just want to say thank you again for your service to our children and our community, and best wishes for the future. Thank you so much.
I can't thank you enough for walking us through the first few months of this, coming on a board is extremely difficult. Thank you so much for walking us through the service. And thank you for your service, and I wish you well on your new endeavor.
I think Dr. Emery is the only person that I've chased down in a car so that we could have a meeting at Midtown. And she was at a school, and I said, "I gotta talk to you right now." And by darn, she got in the car, and I got behind her, and we went flying to Midtown. And I will never, never forget what you did for me for that. I also want to say, Project Impact, here's our foundation. What you did and how you got involved with the businesses in Winston-Salem is just really unbelievable, and what it's doing for our kids. And what it's giving back to all of us that live in Winston-Salem is because of our foundation, Dr. Emery. One more thing I gotta say. I went over to Fallow Hill, and I saw kids getting tablets. I've never seen so many white teeth with smiles in all my life because of this lady and what she did and what she gave these kids. Something that they will have all their life, that they probably could not have afforded. She helped them get it. Thank you, Dr. Emery. I wish you the very, very best.
Well, um, lots have been said tonight about the things that you've done while you're here, while you've been here. Lots of creative and innovative strategies and programs and things that I hope will be far-reaching once you've gone. You've left a legacy, um, behind, and you will be missed. Thank you for being a classy lady with high character and integrity, and for always seeking to understand and to do the right thing. Um, it's our loss, but DPI is gain, and many districts across the state will benefit from, from your wisdom, um, the many years that you've spent in education. And so I like the rest of these ladies up here and many people in this room, I feel sure. Across the district, we'll see. I think we have a plan to later on to do a, um, a bigger reception. But tonight is your last night, and we will miss you sitting here with us. We wish you the very best. We love you, and God bless you.
Um, I will say that Board Member Mott Singer had a family emergency, and so she had to leave, and please keep her in your prayers. Um, I will say lastly, before I ask Dr. Emery to maybe say a few words to the community, since this is her last, um, school board meeting, that when, um, she and I talked about the resignation, and I hope she don't mind me saying this, but I think it attests to who I think she is and what I would want this community to know about Dr. Emery. It was so very selfless, the reason she gave why she wanted to resign. It was really about this community, the children, and, um, helping our school board to move progressively forward. And I told her, she was a triple A-class woman and leader, and I have super high regard for her leadership. And I hope to be able to walk in those types of footsteps as it relates to leadership. So again, I thank Dr. Emery, and I would like for her to maybe say a few words, um, to the community.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all so much. I promise this will be short. Uh, one, because I can't hold it together too long, but also just to say thank you. Um, I thank this board for tremendous support over the years. I appreciate it so much. I have to say one thing. We talk a lot in this district about one band, one sound. Sometimes you're the lead singer, and sometimes you're the drummer. And sometimes the drummer becomes the lead singer. So my request of you is to be sure you support the new leader of this district, who's coming from the drums to the lead singer role. There's not a person in this district who loves it more. It's his district. He grew up here. He cares about it. He will not do anything that won't help it move. And our goal, as the chairman mentioned, is to make sure in these next 60 days that no one misses a beat, that there's no upset or concern, because it's about the district, not about Bev or Ken or Shay. It's about 54,000 kids and the folks who support them. And so you have my promise. Um, I know how to be the mother of the groom, where you step back out of the way and you support from a silent place. And that's my commitment to Dr. Simington and to this board, um, in this transition, and to you. And I thank you for really the ride of a lifetime. And I will forgive the people who made a video that doesn't really have at least one smiling picture of me. And thank you.
I would like to thank you all for, um, your patience while we added that piece to the, um, agenda. Dion, our counsel, said that I could take the chair privilege to add that, so we did, and it was well worth it. Um, but now can I get a motion to adjourn? Sir moved. All in favor? Thank you all.